I'll open up a hearing for HB sixteen twenty relative to suspending the issuance of new landfill permits until two thousand and thirty one. And I believe we have. Our work session is later that after, after we're done. Um, no, wait a minute. Where am I? It's tomorrow. No, no, no. Our work session will be three thirty tomorrow afternoon. So, um, what I have for HB sixteen twenty, uh, introducing the bill is sponsor Representative Rocheford. Welcome to Environment Agriculture.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the committee. I appreciate the time that you gave me. I do want to say my new colleague, Representative Sean Durkin wishes he was here, but he couldn't make it. So he sends his best regards. Um, before you today is HB sixteen twenty. And it's a pretty straightforward bill, I hope. That's probably, uh, worst thing I could probably say. But, um, ultimately, the, the, the packet I just handed you, um, I'm gonna actually be using this today and tomorrow. I'll be back again tomorrow for another bill. And, um, this is the first few pages of the committee report. Uh, the final committee report for the Committee to Study Unlimited Service Area Permits for Landfills and Out-of-State Waste Coming Into New Hampshire. So I've got this bill today. I've got another bill coming tomorrow. So I will be referring to this, uh, um, on both days. Or, as you probably recall, that was a bill that, uh, or a study committee that met, um, over the summer. I know Madam Chair came to at least one of our meetings. And we ended up with a number of findings. And, uh, that's on page, on the third page in the recommendations. And this bill today actually speaks to one of those recommendations. And that is the consideration of a moratorium against the construction of new landfills. And, uh, we felt in the committee that, uh, the concept should at least be discussed and presented to, to you folks to, um, to consider. And I want to actually talk about the word moratorium. Sometimes people get worried about that, concerned about it. Uh, I don't think there's any intention here amongst myself and amongst others, um, to eliminate landfills entirely. I think that, uh, Representative, the previous hearing said, you know, it's, it's a necessary evil that we have to deal with. The fortunate thing that we have in New Hampshire is we have plenty of capacity of landfills. In fact, looking at, uh, the biennial solid waste report from DES, we have capacity until twenty thirty-three, thirty-four-ish. Um, even in twenty, uh, twenty thirty, we'll have an excess of three hundred and sixty-three thousand tons. So we don't have a gun to our head. We have, we have the luxury of time to talk about this and, and, and consider this. And that's one of the things the findings of the committee said. There are a lot of moving parts with this. Um, and so how do we deal with solid waste and landfills and capacity? And one of the things that we considered was in the, in the committee is recycling, advanced recycling, incineration. Um, uh, having, having more utilization of recycled products. And really what this bill does is it buys us time by stopping the issuance of landfill permits to consider those things, to consider those other options as we move forward. Um, I mean, there were topics that we discussed. I know the chair was there that really, you know, I think that, you know, bipartisan, bicameral, uh, uh, committee really said, you know, we really should be spending, spending some time on this. And, uh, there may be some legitimate real answers to this problem that's been, uh, that's been going on for quite some time. So, um, the point being is this, this pauses the issuance of, of new, uh, landfill permits. But it doesn't stop the department from accepting and investigating applications. So that's the other thing, too. If you look at line five of the bill, the department shall continue to accept and investigate applications. So it gives the opportunity for things to come in, um, the, the, uh, the department to, to investigate these and, um, and, and really ruminate on, on, on them and study them. Um, and then they, and it holds off the issuance to twenty thirty-one. And the other option, as you, as you, this committee knows, we are having new rules in development, uh, that should be out in July, maybe. I think I've heard. Um, I've seen a draft of those. I'm sure, I know you have been briefed on that as well. So this also not only doesn't give pause while those new rules are being, being considered, but if the same staff that are developing the rules are also reviewing the permits, it gives, uh, it gives some margin and some break there. The other topic that we discussed is, um, which I'll be talking about tomorrow. Um, I'm gonna save that for tomorrow. And, uh, again, really is, you know, a pause on the issuance of, of permits. We found that this is probably the most elegant, personally, I think this is the most elegant solution to this issue with so many moving parts. And, um, and it just gives us time because we do have the capacity. We have plenty of capacity here in the state of New Hampshire. One of the things that I wanted to talk about really quickly, and I was going to have a, an economist here, but he's hung up in, oh, he's, he's here. I will wait on that then, um, is, uh, the fiscal note. So he, he arrived right on, right on, right on cue. Um, and with that, I'm gonna hand it over to the committee and, uh, I'm available for questions.
Representative Bigsby.
Okay, so I think that you're aware that there is currently another permit that has been submitted for, uh, the landfill, uh, attempt in Dalton. And I was wondering, uh, how this bill would affect that and whether the fact that the, uh, bill was going to be processed after the, uh, that permit had, was submitted, uh, has an impact on how this bill would work.
Yeah, so that's a good question. It's a relevant question. And this bill was actually submitted prior to that application being, being, uh, sent in. So, um, I don't know if this was, you know, we knew that this was coming, this, uh, application up north. I don't know if this was the bill that expedited that submission or not. I've been told that it probably was. But, um, uh, that is, that is a good question and something that needs to be considered here as we move forward.
Representative Haskins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Representative, for taking my question. I'm interested in, um, lines five and six. The department shall continue to accept and investigate applications. What, what did you have in mind with that?
So the, the point is, is they will, again, building off the last question, we had anticipated a, a, an application being filed. Uh, I did not anticipate it being filed when it was. So, but the, the intent was, is that people can, you know, applicants can submit an application. They can send in an application for a landfill. Um, the DES can work on the application, but it won't issue the final permit until two thousand and thirty-one.
Follow-up, Madam Chair?
Follow-up.
Thank you. Um, one of my concerns all along has been that the rulemaking process is going on at the same time that the permit is being reviewed. And it seems to me that DES has indicated to us that they are somewhat understaffed and underfunded. And I wonder whether it makes sense to you that an application be reviewed when the rulemaking is going on.
And, and, and again, being that there's no pressure with this, I mean, it's two thousand and thirty-one is where, where we have the, uh, the, the timeframe. So there's no immediate need to, to process, I mean, they can, uh, process or, uh, investigate an application, but they don't have to. This kind of, this will put the pause on it. So if they want to allocate staff to develop rules and put this aside while they do that, they, they can. One of the other things that I think you, you bring up a good point is that, you know, we have rules that are developing and we have, we have, we have conditions that are evolving right now in the state. I mean, we have a, a, a landfill right now that's leaking PFAS and it's headed towards a river. And, you know, I mean, I know that there is, uh, DES contends that it's not actively leaking. It was from prior to the landfill when it was, when it was, uh, unlined. But we have other groups that, you know, would, would disagree with that. So, I mean, those are major issues. I mean, that's, that's something that should be settled. It should be figured out before we move forward with any new landfills. I mean, uh, having gone through this now for a second year, myself personally here, but watching this issue since I was in eighth grade. Uh, I, I grew, grew up in the North Country and, and when it was sandco, we've all been watching this whole thing develop. You know, we've always wondered what's gonna happen when that's, when it hits the water. And just a year ago, we were here and DES was saying, uh, well, these are double lined and triple lined and, uh, um, you know, we're not gonna worry about it. It, it's safe. But my colleague once said, you know, if the Titanic was wrapped in bubble wrap, would you still go on it? I mean, that's, that, so the question, the point being is there are some real questions that have to be answered. And, you know, anyone, I know there are folks that are, follow the PFAS stuff going down in Merrimack. Uh, we have the, the Air Force Base. Uh, we just, in my committee, in Ways and Means, we talked about a leak that, you know, it was cleaned up years ago. But the, the, on the land, but now it's leaking into Squam Lake. Um, so the point being is that, uh, I mean, the, yeah, the rules are being developed. But it, and, and DES can work on the permits while this pause is taking place. But the reality is, I think we gotta get the rules right. We have to get the permitting right before we, before we do anything. Because, I mean, I, I, I say this personally, I, I literally, I, my, my earth science teacher in seventh, eighth, ninth grade was talking to us about the sandco landfill, which is now in BETH, NCES. He said, once those go in, you will never get them out. And it's true. Once the stuff is in the ground, well, good or bad, we're stuck with it forever. So we've gotta get this right. And, uh, this adds us time. It pumps the brakes. It gives us a little space, gives us a little margin so we can do the best thing.
Indeed, thank you.
Representative Germana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for, Representative, for taking my question. I'm gonna ask you to address one of the critiques of the bill, uh, that Commissioner Scott included in the letter that he sent to the committee and you were copied on that, on, on that letter. But to revisit for a moment the time we spent together in that study committee, one of the things we talked about, right, was, uh, what it means to be vested when, when we talked to DES and to the Attorney General's office, thinking about what we could do and what we couldn't do, what it means for a company to be vested, right? Um, and the reason why I bring that up is because in the letter, Commissioner Scott, uh, on the one hand, expresses concern that this doesn't address potential capacity needs. In the next paragraph, he acknowledges, but then criticizes the bill for actually addressing potential capacity needs by saying that it would be unfair to grant extensions of current landfills, right? Rather than provide a new, uh, provide a permit for a new landfill potentially. So could, could you speak to that, that criticism and specifically to how current landfills are already vested, right? So the, that the granting of an expansion is not the same as the granting of a new landfill? Because existing landfills are already vested and potential landfills are not.
Yes, thank you, Representative. Um, for the record, I, I have not read my email. I've been in committee all morning, so I have not read that. I know that you said, you, 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 you said I've got it, so I'm sure it's sitting there, uh, um, uh, in my, in my email box. But I can talk about, you know, the difference between, when, when we created the bill, uh, we felt it was important that landfills that are already operating should be allowed to expand under, under their current guidelines. Um, this goes out to going into new landfills. And I think the talk earlier today about green space versus brown space really comes into play here. Uh, a, a landfill that's already been permitted, it's already been accepting garbage, it's there. The garbage is there. It's, 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 you know, the, the horse is out of the, the barn there, if you will. Um, you know, any, you know, we, we, we're assuming that, uh, monitoring is being done, the wells are being monitored. Uh, the structure is in place to, to do that, to the best of our ability as of today. Going into a new facility, I mean, the one that comes to mind is Dalton. You know, it's a, it's a green space. There's never been trash there. Uh, it's, it's sitting next to a lake. But as soon as you start putting stuff in there, like I said, it's there. It's gonna be there forever. So I think the, 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 the point being is that, you know, we protect our pristine areas for now until we get it right. But we allow those that are continuing to do business with best practices. I've been to these facilities and it's, I, I, you know, if you haven't been to a landfill in New Hampshire, I would encourage you to do so because, you know, the stuff that goes on there is really quite remarkable. Um, you know, but they're doing things to the best, the best practices. Who's to say best practices five years are gonna be, from now, are gonna be best practices today? When I was in eighth grade, best practices were to throw it in a big pit. And, you know, today, we would line that pit. We'd say, because, you know, that pit may or may not be leaking. It's leaking sometime. It started leaking sometime. Whether or not it was back then or now, I don't know. But, um, you know, there's differences of opinion there. So I hope that addressed your question.
Any follow-up?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you reluctantly, but thank you. Uh, and could you also just very briefly, uh, since we have time, and I know you also have to leave to get to your daughter's play today. So don't want to take too much more time. But, um, could you also speak to one of the other things that we discussed in the committee, which is, you're talking about what we might be doing five years from now. We've had a lot of discussion in this committee about advanced recycling, for example. So if, isn't it the case that the capacity issues, we will be addressing them by pursuing plans that we have regarding food waste diversion and advanced recycling? That will also ease some of the capacity, uh, issues, correct?
Yeah, I, I, that, that, that will. And, and I'm, uh, one of the things that was mentioned in the fiscal, and I'm not gonna speak to the fiscal note per se. We've got someone here that, uh, is, uh, is much better at that than I am. But one of the things they talked about is that it's gonna increase transportation costs. Well, I, I push back, to transport costs to landfills. And I'm gonna push back on that a little bit because of exactly what you said. By hitting pause on this and following the recommendations of the study committee, which is pursuing advanced recycling and improving recycling methods and, uh, and things like that. Um, you conceivably reduce the amount that you're hauling to landfills. I mean, that one, one could think that, that, that would, uh, that would do that. The other topic was incineration. Incineration will eliminate a third of what goes into the landfills. Um, and again, these are, you know, I know there, those are hot button, button issues as well, but they're issues that need time to be vetted. And, uh, and, and that's exactly what this bill does. It gives time to, to further explore advanced recycling and, and, and implement it, consider implementing it in New Hampshire. I think one of the things we found out in, uh, our committee over the summer is New Hampshire is the only, the only state in the Northeast that doesn't, it's lagging. It's the last state in the Northeast, uh, with, with efforts on recycling. We know that, um, compost, thirty percent of the stuff that we throw away is compostable. That's filling up, uh, a space in our, in our landfills. So, yeah, this pumps the brakes, says, you know, let's, let's look at what we can do aside from this. Let's get our rules right. Let's, uh, we don't have, we, we don't have a gun to our head. We don't have, we don't have a capacity issue right now. Uh, and this just buys us time to, to make the right moves, make, do the right things.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representative Rocheford.
Yes.
So did your study committee come up with two thousand and thirty-one as a, as a date? Or how, how did that date come up?
Yeah, so the, um, that's a good question. And so the study committee stopped at a moratorium or a pause should be considered, uh, could be considered. We didn't get into the details too much. The, the two thousand and thirty-one came up based on the, uh, biennial solid waste report, um, which estimated, uh, capacity, needing further capacity in two thousand and thirty-four. I didn't print that out because it's a hundred and plus pages, but that's the biennial solid waste report, um, that's on the DES website. It's on page seven that says the, uh, um, capacity may fall short projected in two thousand and thirty-four. So considering two thousand and thirty-one, three years, buys us some time, um, to get a permit, to get, to get, to get a facility in place.
Does, does it take three years to get a facility put in place?
That I don't know.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Representative Tenza.
I just wanted to ask if you feel comfortable in, um, uh, basically an application that's sitting out there during the same time that rules are, in a sense, being processed? Does that make you feel comfortable? Because in a sense, you know, rules are being developed at the same time there's an application in there. And is that part of the reason why in putting a moratorium in here? Because there is not a definite need at this point and there isn't for another ten years?
You know, been down here a year and, uh, I can tell you, the folks up north, as everywhere, we're looking for an answer on some stuff. We have needs. We have crazy things like two hundred and fifty feet. You can put a landfill two hundred and fifty feet from a body of water. And, you know, th- those things are common sense, we would think. But we can't get a consensus on, on what, what, what the right way to go is. I mean, this house is bipartisan, uh, passed bipartisan bills to, to, to make common sense changes. And it gets to the other side of the wall and it dies. Um, we've had cases where, you know, both, how, both bodies have passed something. It gets to the corner at, office and, and dies. Meanwhile, you've got Forever Chemicals rolling into our rivers, um, right upstream from my town, who has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to revitalize it downtown. And, uh, and, and, and we're thinking, this is crazy. Why isn't anybody doing anything on that? So does it, am I concerned about that? You know, a, a, a couple of things. Yeah, I'm concerned that we, we haven't done the right, we haven't, we, it, it, getting common sense stuff through down here hasn't happened. We've got, we've got places all over the state, being Newington and, and, and Merrimack and, and all of, we just placed, replaced two wells in the state of New Hampshire for schools because of contamination. And we're still not getting anything done down here. That concerns me. Um, it would concern me as an applicant to have an application in there, knowing the rules might change. I mean, I, I, I can't imagine putting up an investment like that, uh, knowing that the, uh, the DES might change the rules midstream. So, yeah, there's a lot of concerns. I have a lot of concerns there. And, uh, I think that this is a, it's a common sense thing. Um, I mean, it's a pause. It's a, you know, we do this, uh, in my Ways and Means Committee. We do this with historical race horsing. We, we've put a pause on things because HRH gambling, it's, it's a contentious issue. But regardless of what HRH does, it doesn't poison wells. And if we can put a moratorium on a electronic machine that, you know, people gamble on, why can't we put a moratorium on something that could poison our drinking water?
Representative Knapp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for taking my question. Um, I wonder, did your committee hear from private, uh, landfill companies? And did they have any pushback on this legislation or?
Yeah, we actually did. We heard, uh, and, and the, the, the reports online. And again, I gave you the first few pages of that. Uh, we heard from representatives from Carberry, uh, landfill. And I think maybe Waste Management, um, uh, some of the folks may be here in the room. Um, and we did, we did hear from them. And, you know, I, I, they, they were very, I mean, I, I didn't, I, they want to do the right thing, too. I, I'm not here to demonize anybody. I mean, uh, we all understand, every single one of us throws stuff away. I mean, like you said earlier, I mean, it's, it's the stuff that we deal with. Um, you got, they're doing the best they can. They're, 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 they're trying to do it to the highest standards that's around. Um, and, uh, and I think their, their feedback was receptive and it was, uh, we, 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 they were respectful. Um, I've had nothing, my interactions with them in this capacity have been nothing but, um, top-notch. And, uh, I think they're an industry that really want to do the right thing, too. And we just have to work together to find out the pathway that best suits both sides.
Representative Rocheford, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
I think you called Jared Sullivan to speak.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Jared Sullivan, Representative for Graffin Two, which is Bethlehem and Bransonia. The, one of the bills are, sorry, one of the landfills that is so contentious is in my town of Bethlehem. Um, I'm gonna be as quick as I can because I have to get back up to my committee where two of my bills are in the middle of a working session. We haven't just got to them yet, so, um, anyways, I'm just here to talk about the fiscal note. It was, somebody asked me, well, David asked me to look at it. He thought it didn't quite make sense. And so I thought I would look into it. And there are a few things in, in here that I, I, I feel like we should flag. So, um, for starters, they're talking about there being no impact on fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, they're saying that they do not anticipate an impact on the state or local expenditures. So I guess everything starts in two thousand and twenty-six because that's when it's anticipated that the Bethlehem, uh, landfill will close down. Um, it doesn't matter whether this bill passes or not. The Bethlehem landfill will close down. Even if something changed and we were able to extend the Bethlehem or do the expansion at the Bethlehem landfill. Uh, I've spoken with Casella and they have, I've been there several times on, on the site and got a tour of the landfill because this is a super hot-boshing issue in my town, as you can imagine. They've told me that even if the Dalton thing does get approved or somehow Bethlehem reversed course and we did expand the Bethlehem, there would be a gap in between there, starting in two thousand and twenty-six because it takes that much time to build out. So this bill really has no impact of, starting in two thousand and twenty-six. That's going to happen regardless. So the fact that that entered this methodology in the fiscal note is a little concerning. Um, because those costs are going to increase regardless, if, if that's what they do believe will happen. So their, their logic is, you know, in their economic analysis of, of the impact of this bill is that you're going to see a decrease in the supply of landfill space or the capacity to deal with waste, right? And, and that, that, that is true. You, you're going to see that. And that generally does, when you see decreases in supply of things, costs do go up. But it, that's kind of looking at it in a vacuum. And I think that in, in this world, there are other things that happens. When prices of, uh, one thing happens, generally the substitutes react. And so, you know, if, if, if the cost of Coca-Cola went up dramatically, we'd all switch and start consuming Pepsi instead, right? And Pepsi could start producing more because they would have a market opportunity. Well, it's reasonable to assume that certainly in the medium term, maybe not immediately, but the medium term, if we decide not to increase our landfill capacity in this state, that the other things would step in to fill that void because there would be a market opportunity. Again, this bill doesn't, I want, I think this is a really key point. This bill does not impact whether or not the Bethlehem landfill is going to close. It's going to close regardless of whether we extend, extend the life in Bethlehem in the future or have Dalton. There, this capacity problem happens with or without this bill. And this bill, this fiscal note suggests that if the problems from a financial standpoint start to occur in two thousand and twenty-six, it's just not true. It doesn't make sense. And I hope that you guys can, you know, use that clear flawed methodology to discredit this part of the fiscal analysis. Um, with that, I'll open up questions. And if not, I'll run back to my committee.
Any questions? Representative, go on.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and thank you for taking my question, Representative. Uh, yeah, with, I heard what you said about the, um, increases and, um, you made some good points on the economic thing. But living in Grafton County, like a lot of our constituents, myself included, we have private waste. So one thing that worries me about bills like this is that we can't really see too far into the future, right? Because, you know, the world in two thousand and nineteen is a lot different, you know, than it is today. And we didn't see these, um, uh, you know, unforeseen things or, we do live in an uncertain world. So is there any kind of concern that you have about, um, you know, waste management prices rising between now and two thousand and thirty-one and, you know, because that does impact our constituents and our own, uh, waste services costs? My costs have gone up in this past year alone, so I'm just wondering if there's any concerns, uh, regarding prices.
So if your prices have gone up in the past year, it's not because of this bill, obviously. So I think the market forces that drive cost increases are anything from national inflation problems that we've, we've all seen, increases in gas prices or oil prices that drive, you know, these vehicles that pick up our waste, um, labor shortages. So you have to pay people who work and drive these trucks. And these waste removal, uh, service companies have to pay their staff more. Like, all of those things are going to drive the costs. They're gonna pass that on to you. If you're gonna look at this bill specifically, the relevant question is, does this bill prevent capacity from coming on? And the reality is, it might, but it's not clear that's entirely true, right? And so we know that the Bethlehem thing is not scheduled, scheduled to be expanded because the, the town won't, won't allow it. They've already, like, voted it down at the town level. The Dalton thing remains kind of in the air, last I checked. Um, that might come, it might not, but it's certainly not gonna come in two thousand and twenty-six. And if it does, if it does pass, uh, I don't, I can't speak to how long it would take to develop it. But, uh, if two thousand, it's definitely not gonna be by two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven. So it'd be some point between then and two thousand and thirty-one, which is what the moratorium is suggesting. Whether or not that happens, I don't know. So I guess you could make an art- So I guess you could make an argument that if the assumption that the Dalton thing will be developed. Then potentially there could be an increase, potentially compared to the status quo. Um, I don't know that you could, I don't know if that's a super reasonable assumption. You have to, you have to make some real assumptions to get to that outcome, that prices will increase because of this bill. Prices might very well in- increase because of the inflationary environment or whole host of other reasons, but because of this bill. That feels like a stretch to me without knowing a little bit more information.
Representative Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and thank you for taking my question. With regard to the waste disposal hierarchy, we know that landfilling is our least preferred method of dealing with the things that we consume. By purchase, all of the other things. And um. I also noted in um the report that was issued, uh, that was associated with the prime sponsors. Uh, testimony that we're only twenty per six, twenty six percent recycling rate for the state of New Hampshire. And I think that we have our. Uh, triangle upside down right now. Um, so uh uh our desire would be to be recycling more and landfilling less. Would you not agree?
I mean, sure, ideally, I mean, I'm I'm not an expert of of the best way to deal with our waste problems. But there's plenty of material to be recycled than it should be recycled. Um, my understanding is recycling rates across the entire country are quite low. Uh, but I don't want to pretend like I'm an expert on this, I'm not an expert on why we recycle, what we recycle, and why we don't recycle, what we don't recycle. Compared to other nations or other parts of the country even. On that point, I would say that there are a lot of things that could be recycled, that perhaps aren't recycled. And I know in my town of Bethlehem, we're like one of the only towns in the North Country that actually has curbside pickup. And in it, we have all the recycling thrown into one bin. And from my understanding, much of it just gets landfilled anyways and doesn't get separated out. I think basically the metal gets separated out. Uh, again, don't, don't hold me to that, I'm not an expert on it, this is just what I've been told. Um, but I think recycling, yeah, recycling is important, I think if we can create a market for that stuff, or if there is a market for that stuff. I think there, from an economic standpoint, I'm an economist, that's why I was asked to come speak here. From an economic standpoint, you gotta ask, why are we not recycling things? And I don't know the answer to that, but if there's a market for this stuff, why is it not being recycled? Does it take a government nudge to force us in that direction? Or is there some sort of market failure that is causing us to, is it a, is it a lack of infrastructure for recycling stuff that makes recycling more expensive than? Landfilling currently. And I think that's actually a pretty interesting question that it would be good for somebody to kind of look at or explain. I don't know the answer to it, but um certainly it's preferable to recycle, uh, holding all else constant.
Thank you, and one follow up.
Sure.
So to that, and I guess if if we increase all of our other things, like I believe maybe it was mentioned in the uh uh other testimonies. And we do other waste diversion, composting, recycling. Um, is it your assumption that the the impact and burden of. Uh, capacity might slow down with these other efforts?
Sure, yeah, I mean, that that's a very logical assumption and also. Uh, I mean, one of the big concerns with landfills, uh, and I know I'm not educating anybody on this topic, but just to say it because it needs to be said. One of the big concerns about landfills in this specific location of Bethlehem or the Dalton facility is that. The potential for leaking into water that's very close with the porous soil is is pretty high. And that's the concern, and we're not saying we need no landfills, obviously we need landfills. This gives us time to kind of figure that out, and in that process, maybe there are other solutions which right now will be considered because they're sort of. The default, the status quo, and there's always status quo bias in every decision making and we know where the landfill is and in my town it's right there. So why would we have robust recycling facilities in my town or maybe the surrounding towns when you have a landfill right there? But yeah, if you can get more recycled, then that that does seem. Um, like it it might reduce capacity needs in the future for actual landfills.
Representative Germana.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for taking my question. Uh, and with regard to capacity. Uh, the provision in the bill that would allow for the expansion of existing facilities. Providing more capacity would also counter inflationary pressures, right, in terms of 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 the market, not inflationary per se. But we have the capacity, we have the ability through this bill to add capacity, which should help prevent the increase in costs, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the the Burl, the Berlin one, um, I mean, that's presumably where the stuff in my town will go. When this, when this landfill that we currently have closes. There's no reason why they can't expand, I don't, that, this is prohibit that and that, that is a bill, a a landfill that from my understanding is a. Good landfill in terms of it's not sitting on porous soil, it's sitting on a clay-based soil. So if if we're going to have uh expansions of other ones, the capacity problems may or may not materialize. Like, I think in the very, very short term, there's going to be capacity problems regardless of this bill because of what I laid out when I first started my testimony. But I I think that, you know, if that does drive up prices, guess what's gonna happen? The market's gonna work and and the landfill in in Berlin, for example, will likely expand.
Representative Potenza.
Are you familiar with um? With Dalton switching um over to a new landfill outside of Bethlehem?
Uh, you mean they don't use the Bethlehem landfill?
Correct.
Uh, somebody has told me that, yeah, I I I don't know where where it goes right now.
So they actually switched to Carberry?
Is there a question about this bill?
It it is.
Okay.
Um, they switched to Carberry, which was less money, which in talking about the money piece here. But in doing so, realizing that there is still plenty of capacity with the New Hampshire piece. So, because you have to be able to take New Hampshire trash first, in a sense. So if a landfill is taking fifty percent or more, then that also negates this with. Um, you know, we've got recycling and food waste and all that, can you see that to be keeping us to a point in in um twenty thirty one?
I mean, yeah, I think so. I I I don't think that this is going to drive up costs and I think the costs are gonna go up based on what's already in the pipeline. Because it takes a while to build these facilities, so this bill is not what's going to drive any sort of cost increases is the argument against this fiscal note. Which I don't think was done very well. Um, I think, and and just not, I don't generally live in a world of anecdotes, but I'll give you an anecdote to your point. Which is, I was doing work on my my house this summer and getting a dumpster from Casella, which would go to the landfill in my town. Was considerably more expensive than getting one from a Berlin provider where it went to Carberry. And so, I mean, it might just make sense to expand that area because they're already jacking up prices in Casella. It's already sort of oversubscribed to, it seems like, just based on the market forces that we're seeing.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I call Wayne Morrison to come and speak. Welcome, Mr. Morrison.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, for the record, my name is Wayne Morrison and uh. I am the President of North Country Alliance for Balanced Change, which is a big title for a small group of volunteers. Who don't get paid for any of the work that they do, but I've spent the last four or five years uh working very hard with a coalition of people. To try and make changes and and reform some of the regulations, particularly around landfill siting. Uh, but also in protecting clean water uh all across the state. So I know you've had a long day and I'm sure it's a long week. The testimony I gave you, I'm gonna take a leap of faith and I'm gonna kind of set that aside, I'm not gonna try and read it. I hope you will. It's uh, it's it's was put together with a lot of uh care and tried to express myself in terms of why I support this bill. But I think for the, for the time that I have with you, I'd really like to focus my attention on um. Why do we need to pause? And why twenty thirty one? There are multiple solid waste warning lights flashing in the state of New Hampshire. Some of them are flashing yellow and some of them are flashing red. And it's important that this group, the legislature, pay attention to those and finally to act on them. Business as usual in the landfilling business is not going to be particularly good for New Hampshire. We have a booming outdoor recreation economy. And we need to protect the health and the environment and the, and we need to protect. Uh, the best interests of our citizens and our businesses. The pause gives the legislature a chance first to evaluate a bunch of moving parts. That we don't particularly have answers to today, but we need to get answers and then we need to act. I want to start, I have five points that I would like to raise with the group. The first one being, you've heard a lot about capacity. And I am here to tell you, after diving into this and spending hundreds of hours trying to understand. How D E S and how our system works in calculating capacity. We absolutely do not have a capacity situation today. And the twenty thirty four date that is quoted in the biennial report, I hope all of you know. That that date is a function of a model that D E S uses. I'm not against models, but they're only as good as the feedback and the data that you feed into them. And if you explore that model and if Mike Wimsat was here, Director Wimsat was here, he would tell you. That twenty thirty four is not a date that's really meaningful. Because it, that that capacity shortfall starts because we assume the largest landfill in the state operated by waste management. Is going to shut down. That's not gonna happen. They are going to expand and they're gonna continue to run the largest landfill in the state. Twenty thirty four is likely to be twenty forty four or twenty fifty four, depending on the capacity that they add at that time. So, in in considering the actions we need to take. It is clear that the legislature and the state has plenty of time to try and wade through some difficult problems. And to the extent that we can, we won't get it perfect, but we certainly will get it better than we have in the past. And now is the time to do that, it could, we couldn't have a better time, so the pause is important. And the timing, this is the perfect time to stop. Secondly, my second point. The state went essen- essentially nineteen years without updating its solid waste plan. That action or lack of action was extremely detrimental to our solid waste position. Relative to Massachusetts, relative to Vermont, relative to Maine. While we were essentially ignoring the solid waste problem, other states were taking all kinds of actions. That has made us very attractive to the private operators in the solid waste business. It is not a surprise, it is, it is not a difficult problem to see why trash is coming to New Hampshire. Our laws are behind the times and they are more lax than our neighboring states. After nineteen years, Karen Ebell and the Solid Waste Working Group put a year. Working diligently with D E S to develop an updated plan. And guess what that plan says? The overarching goal of that plan is to reduce the amount of solid waste. Going in, needing disposal by twenty five percent. What does that mean? Well, it's calculated based on how much municipal solid waste and how much construction and demolition material that we produce. Twenty five percent, as it turns out, when you do the math, is three hundred and seventy thousand tons a year by the year twenty thirty. And just to put that in perspective, if we were to hit that goal, those numbers are bigger than the two or the three of the largest landfills. That currently operate in the state. So if we were successful, we would eliminate the need for one landfill. So I asked this group, why on earth? As we sit here in twenty twenty four, would we even be considering adding additional capacity before we even have a chance to see? How are we gonna do against that goal? Isn't that where the state of New Hampshire should be putting its energy? Isn't that where the investment should be going? The Solid Waste Working Group and the and the state's solid waste management plan says we should be in the diversion business. Not the landfilling business. We should be worried about composting and recycling, reuse. We should not be looking to knock down trees and kill wetlands and make more space for more landfills. Our neighboring states are closing landfills. And they are shipping their trash to New Hampshire. We should all be very upset about that. Our neighbors to the south are fixing their problem by making, making it our problem. And by the way, it's not only the trash they sent us. But that trash is turning into leachate. And you should think of leachate as PFAS. Landfills are essentially PFAS factories. They produce millions and millions of gallons of leachate every year. And that has to be collected, stored, pumped, transported and treated somewhere in the state. And that puts New Hampshire citizens and New Hampshire businesses at risk every single day. And although the industry wants to tell you about doubled line systems and monitoring wells. Let me tell you, they all leak. And we don't, the last thing that we need is another landfill. When we don't need the capacity and we're gonna solve somebody else's problem. The third thing is the change in the updating of the D E S rules. Nobody that I talk to anywhere in the state can tell me when was the last time we had a new landfill. Most of them are organically grown from dumps that that somebody acquired and grew. We haven't had a greenfield landfill in in anyone's memory. We should at least make sure before we ever have another new landfill, we are using the latest rules, the tightest possible regulations. To protect our resources and our people. Fourth. New tougher regulatory standards are under review for forever chemicals, PFAS. Which are abundantly present in every bit of the leachate that gets produced. Top, toxic chemicals are one of the reasons landfilling is at the very bottom of the state's solid waste hierarchy. We, we make beautiful PowerPoint slides that say, here's the hierarchy. And at the very bottom tip, the last thing, the 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 move of last resort is to create a landfill. And then our behavior is the exact inverse. The first thing we do is we've got a capacity problem, let's either expand. Or let's add a new one. What are we doing? Now is the time to change direction. The last item I want to talk to you about. Is that the overarching problem taxing New Hampshire's solid waste management system is the unlimited importation of out-of-state waste. By private operators. Everything else pales in comparison to that. Whether it's forty percent, fifty percent. If we keep on the track that we're going, it's gonna be sixty percent, there's no stopping it. And to my understanding, D E S has no control over that, they can't limit it. We are letting private operators dictate our solid waste strategy and that's, that's a, that's obscene. I do not blame D E S. It has taken an executive branch, a legislative branch. And the Department of Environmental Services to get us where we are today. But guess what? We can fix all of that. D E S cannot do that alone. They cannot fix the out-of-state waste problem, but you can. There are bills coming your way, there are actions we can take, this pause is so important. Because if we don't pause, the risk is that we're gonna let another private operator open a new landfill. And guess what? We are gonna institutionalize out-of-state waste for decades and decades to come. And while you guys go off and look at other things and a billion other bills, you've got all kinds of priorities. People in the North Country are gonna have to live with that decision. And it won't be me. It'll be the next generation and the generation after that, that will not get to experience the beauty. And the environment and all those things that make New Hampshire, New Hampshire. And it's why our out of, our outdoor recreation industry is absolutely booming. It's why people want to come here. Now is exactly the time to pause, to focus, to seek both technical and. Now is exactly the time to pause, to focus, to seek both technical and policy solutions to ensure that if and when we actually do need another landfill, by God, we get it right. We're not ready to do that now. DES is not in a position to make the kind of decisions that reflect a hundred-year commitment that, that one of these landfills ends up being. I know this sounds like a radical proposal to pause. But sometimes that's what you need to get perspective and focus. And the people of New Hampshire deserve that. Again, I will say, I'm not anti-business. I spent my entire life with, working in Fortune 500 companies. I'm pro-business. But the businesses I want to support are the restaurants and the shops and the breweries and all those businesses that are doing well in our state. And one landfill puts all of that at risk. Particularly one that we don't need and one that will serve the needs of Massachusetts as much or more than it will the people of New Hampshire. Please, please, vote aught to pass and support this bill. I take any questions?
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you. I call Haley Jones.
Uh, to the esteemed members of committee, thanks so much for making the time today. My name is Haley Jones and I am the Vermont and New Hampshire State Director with an organization called Slingshot, where we work alongside communities most impacted by environmental health issues to build local power and take aim at polluters. We partner with people from communities who are most impacted by environmental problems, whether we're talking about leaking landfills or PFAS in your water. And we train folks from all walks of life and the skills that they need to make change in their neighborhoods and beyond. We join leaders together to build powerful statewide, regional, and national networks that lay the foundation for lasting change in the world of environmental health. I am here today alongside virtually and physically small business owners and scientific experts and community leaders from across the state to testify in support of HB 1620 to put a moratorium or a pause on new landfill permits until 2031. We really owe it all, uh, to Granite, we all owe it to Granite State residents to think carefully about our waste management and our landfill siding practices before we rush headfirst into a commitment that is going to affect generations to come. And as folks in my generation say, we are not ready to define the relationship with landfill siding yet in New Hampshire. We know that all landfills leak, discharging leachate into the surrounding soils where this garbage juice can travel with really concerning speed. And when you cite landfills on porous or otherwise unsuitable terrain, this toxic leachate can contaminate community water sources before our regulatory agencies, as hard as they might try, have a chance to respond. And I know from my line of work that after seeping through these piles of waste, leachate can be carrying lead and arsenic, heavy metals and toxic forever chemicals like PFAS, all of which are huge public, public health concerns. We know that PFAS alone are associated with cancers, with reproductive disorders, and serious developmental problems. So it's clear that whenever we have the opportunity, we need to be preventing their spread. As you've heard in prior comments, landfill siding is a high-stakes game. And there are corporate polluters out there who are pushing for permit approvals that would have us all gamble with people's lives. So I'm asking you all, instead of making hasty decisions that sacrifice the health of our most vulnerable towns, we need to take this pause. We need to be actively reducing our solid waste production in accordance with this zero-waste hierarchy. And we need to prevent further devastating pollution. We don't want another Claremont, we don't want another Merrimack, we don't want another Bethlehem. We really, really need to take this pause. So I'll just end by saying, we know that now is not the time to play games with our future. And so I'm urging you all to vote aught to pass on 1620 to ensure a thriving future for all the generations to come. Thank you so much for your time and I'm happy to take questions.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Call Kristen Koch? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Kirsten Koch. I'm the Vice President of Public Policy for the Business and Industry Association. We service New Hampshire's statewide Chamber of Commerce and represent hundreds of businesses in the state of New Hampshire. I'm here today to express BIA's opposition to House Bill 1620. As established by BIA's public policy priorities, we support science-based environmental policies that balance economic development with the long-term sustainability of the state's natural resources. BIA has concerns regarding House Bill 1620 because we believe this proposal fails to strike the delicate balance between allowing for economic development and environmental protection. Firstly, we believe House Bill 1620 is unnecessary. The solid waste rules are currently already in the process of being updated by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services and are slated to be done this year. Further, we're concerned that the year 2031 has been arbitrarily determined and is an unreasonably long timeline for a moratorium on landfill permits. Second, the landfill permitting, siding process and development process takes years to complete. From my discussions with technical experts, they've estimated this process takes about six to ten years if all goes smoothly, which we know from recent experience has been a challenge. Um, I'd also like to address line five, um, in the bill. Uh, there's discussion about this earlier about DES will accept and investigate permits, uh, applications during the moratorium time. This line does not alleviate our concerns because it basically allows for applications to be held while the goalpost is moved, whether it's through rules or legislation. If passed, we believe this bill could ultimately result in a shortage of in-state disposal capacity, resulting in New Hampshire-generated solid waste having to be shipped out of state for disposal. And these existing landfills cannot expand exponentially. Not only is this problematic for the solid waste industry, but we believe these changes will have negative consequences and exponentially increase the costs for business in every industry throughout New Hampshire. Additionally, shipping waste out of state has unintended consequences such as dramatically increasing the carbon footprint associated with in-state generated waste disposal. This is one of the many reasons that are completely contrary to the, both federal and state carbon reduction goals and should be a primary reason not to pass this bill. In conclusion, BIA respectfully requests the committee to vote inexpedient to legislate on House Bill 1620 because if passed, the bill would be damaging to New Hampshire's business climate, future economic development, and could also result in unintended environmental impacts as affordable in-state disposal capacity becomes more scarce. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Koch. I'm interested to know if BIA would find, um, a lesser pause acceptable. I mean, if it wasn't 2031, would you, would BIA be amenable to something like, you know, 2028? Something like that? Insofar as, I mean, we've heard testimony saying that, you know, we've got a lot of things going on. We've got rules being developed, we've got, uh, issues with certain landfills. Maybe we just really need to step back and assess what's going on, what we might need in terms of policy and so forth. What, what's your thought on that?
Thank you for the question, Madam Chair. I believe that, of course, a shorter moratorium would be a modest improvement, but with rule changes, you know, being updated this year already, I'm not sure if it's necessary.
Okay. Representative Potenza.
I have two questions. Um, first question, um, hats, the BIA, um, read the, the report, the final report for the study of unlimited service area permits for landfills out of waste?
Thank you for the question. I've reviewed it briefly.
So then my second, um, question would be, how can you say that the bill could cause a capacity issue when the state says otherwise?
I think we're under the belief that, you know, if it takes six to ten years to permit and we're concerned about capacity starting in 2034, then, you know, we're, we're getting pretty close there.
Okay, thank you. Um, Representative Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have two questions too. First of all, um, you know, the, the BIA is probably concerned with job generation and do you, do you anticipate that, that more, that building the, these anticipated, um, uh, landfills would create jobs? Or what, what is the business opportunity in building more landfills?
Thank you for the question. Well, I represent the greater business community, so I can't specifically discuss, um, you know, what the solid waste industry is looking for here, but, uh, of course, it would generate more jobs.
Uh, my second question is, uh, regarding science. You say you use science-based, um, information to make your decisions. Uh, could you, um, sort of explain where, you know, what scientific body you're using to, to determine these things?
Thank you for the question. Um, I believe I said that we support science-based policy. Um, in communicating with, uh, technical experts within our membership, environmental experts.
Representative Germana.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for taking my question. Uh, I'm a college professor. True to form, I'm going to be pedantic about, uh, about the letter here. You indicate, uh, we believe these, these changes will have negative consequences and exponentially increase costs for businesses in every industry. Uh, um, so leaving aside for a moment the actual technical definition of exponential, I'm, I'm assuming this is a more, um, a, 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 a less precise term, meaning just rapid as opposed to literally exponential. But can you tell us, this goes a little bit to Representative Howard's question, how you've determined that? Have you run models? What specific data do you have that you could provide the committee that would demonstrate that there would be a rapid, large increase in costs to industry throughout the state?
Thank you for the question. Um, this information's anecdotal from our members. We know that if they have to pay to send their waste out of state for disposal, that's going to cost more, the further they have to send it. If they're shipping their waste to Ohio for disposal, that's going to cost more than keeping it in state.
Thank you.
Representative Bixby.
Uh, just to follow up on the, the question of jobs, um, I'm wondering if in the, uh, process of looking at the, the, the employment prospects for the north country uh, as the result of a, you know, either having another landfill up there or not, uh, would the landfills provided by the, would the jobs provided by the landfill uh, offset the potential loss of jobs in the tourism industry?
Thank you for the question. I, I think it's a, a good question to look into, but I, I don't have the answer.
Representative Murray.
Um, thank you, um, and thank you for taking my question. So my other question to you around jobs would be, is, is there not the potential for other? If, if this bill were to go forward, is there a potential for other jobs in, in ancillary, ancillary industries? Uh, to maybe, uh, be developed or come alive as a result of a pause and a refocus on some other areas that might be around recycling efforts or some other types of, um, related things that would more comport to our waste disposal hierarchy?
Thank you for the question. And I would say certainly, um, our, our opposition here is not just about jobs though, it's about economic development and, and the ability for businesses to thrive in New Hampshire. So it's not limited to just that.
Um, interested to know, excuse me, how did you get to the number that it takes six to ten years to permit a new landfill?
Um, in discussions with our technical experts and our membership environmental experts, we're talking about, you know, from the beginning of the application process to the actual development of a landfill.
Is that something that, um, a number that you have also verified with Department of Environmental Services?
I have not spoken them, with them directly about verifying that number, but I'm sure they could attest to that in their testimony.
Okay, I don't see any other pink cards, so I don't know. Um, okay. Representative Murray.
Um, yes, thank you. I, I did have one other question or comment. Uh, could you speak to, uh, there are currently situations where, um, some of our waste is already disposed of out of state for various natures. If it, it's a toxic substance or some other entity where we don't deal with that in the state. Which portion are, are you referring to where there would be an increase in out-of-state disposal?
Thank you for the question. I, I think the scenario that I'm referring to in that situation would be if, if we no longer had enough capacity in New Hampshire and had to dispose of our waste then out of state.
Thank you. Any other questions? Representative Bixby.
Yes, do you know if your experts took into account in their, uh, assessment of timing uh, the fact that DES does not permit beyond a certain date uh, simply because it, it is their policy to have, uh, end dates on permits, but the permit does, that end date does not imply that there is not future capacity. It's just the end date of a particular permit and that permits can be and are renewed on a regular basis for extensions of fif- ten to, ten to twenty years.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, so, uh, DES has a cycle of permitting and the fact, and they, uh, what the, when they say our current permitted capacity is through such and such a date, say, uh, 2034. The fact that the permitted capacity is through 2024, 2034 doesn't mean that suddenly uh, the landfills that are permitted no longer have capacity. It's merely that they will need to renew their permits. And that the capacity, the actual capacity may be substantially higher in the future than what's reflected by the permitted capacity. Is that, do your experts take that into account when they're looking at the potential of sending waste out of state?
Well, I think that's an accurate statement, but we're just judging by what's approved right now.
Thank you.
Representative Potenza.
I have two questions. First question, is, uh, Cassella Waste, um, Management, uh, a member of the BIA?
Yes.
Second question, did the BIA go, for example, to, um, a current area, for example, Rochester or Bethlehem, and then get all of those businesses on board with this? And if so, I'd love to have a list of that, because I went up there and, um, talked to a lot of businesses and they are very much against a new landfill in their area.
Thank you for the question. We have a policy development process that goes for a policy advisory subcommittee made up of executive board members. That's how we come to decisions on bills.
So you can't give specific businesses that support or don't support this legislation?
Uh, thank you for the question. It's, it's decided by the members of that subcommittee.
Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming and speaking with us this afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I have no other pink cards, but I see, um, Ms. Kern. And I'd like you to fill out a pink card if you get a chance, please.
Yes, I actually sent one up to you and I don't know where it got to, but I'm happy to fill out another one.
I, you gave it to me for the other bill. Oh, I get, it was for the other bill, but I didn't see one for this one. Did it get lost?
No problem. I can fill out another one.
It's all right. You're on.
Okay, thank you. For the record, my name is Sarah Yuhas Kern and I'm the Assistant Director of the Waste Management Division at New Hampshire DES. And this is Leah McKenna, Administrator of the Solid Waste Management Bureau. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on House Bill 1620. DES opposes this bill because it suspends solid waste permitting, permitting activities that are important to maintaining the stability of the solid waste market in the state. And we're concerned that it could have adverse economic consequences on New Hampshire communities and New Hampshire businesses. And that concern about the economic consequences is related to the projections of capacity. And that concern about the economic consequences is related to the projections of capacity. Uh, and capacity need, which are, um. So, in some ways difficult to assess. Uh, it appears that the twenty thirty one date was selected based on a chart that's in the solid waste biennial report. And the, uh, projections in that report indicate that. Need will not exceed capacity until sometime after twenty thirty one, I think it's twenty thirty five. But it's important to understand that these projections do not take into account, um, important factors. Such as the location of the capacity in the state. And also it doesn't take into account the fact that landfills are able to accept out-of-state waste. When you take those factors into consideration. There is a potential for a capacity need much sooner, um. Year twenty six, twenty seven is what our fiscal note says. While the bill does allow for permitting of expansions at existing landfills to continue during this period of time. Existing landfills may not be positioned or inclined to apply for expansion. So it, uh, may not be reliable to solely rely on potential landfill expansions. To solve any capacity need issues that would arise during that period of time. That summarizes our concerns about the bill and I'm happy to take questions.
Representative Nab.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for taking my question. I'm curious because it came up the other day, um. And because the previous speaker was just talking about their process. What the process is by which DES decides whether to take a position for or against a bill or to just offer commentary and remain neutral.
Uh, the process involves discussion, discussing the details of the bill with our leadership.
Representative Dutzy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. Um, so Nashua has capacity out for forty years. Okay, in its landfill. Um, so if Nashua could do that, why can't other landfills? Um, manage their landfills to have that kind of capacity?
It depends on the specifics of the landfill. How much space they have, uh, what the geometry of the landfill is. Um, some landfills have phases of approvals, how much space is left in their phase, so, so it's specific to the landfill.
Representative Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, most of the reasons that you gave for opposing this bill were financial or economic. Um, and isn't your purview to protect and, and take care of the environment? Um, so I'm just wondering why, you know, why bring, why bringing in garbage from outside and, and keeping that in, in, in income level going? Is more important than protecting the environment?
Uh, there are a couple of issues to unpack there. Uh, the first is that, yes, our mission is to protect human health and the environment. And the Solid Waste Management Act actually charges us with both making sure that New Hampshire has appropriate. Outlet for its solid waste and, um. Meeting the goals for the different types of ways of dealing with the solid waste and protecting the environment. But, uh, the economic concerns are related to that responsibility that we have to make sure that. The solid waste that does need to get landfilled can be landfilled in a way that is affordable. In response to your question about, um. Waste from out of state coming into state, DES does not have authority over that, so we, we don't have a way to control that.
Representative Bixby.
Yeah, so, um, the question came up with the previous speaker about how long it takes to, uh, permit, uh, and, and. Uh, deploy a new landfill. Uh, what is the, what is the timeframe for, uh, uh, from? The initiation of the process to, uh, it becoming open?
Yes, I did hear that in the previous testimony and it makes sense to me. That the, the experts that BIA consulted would indicate that it was six to ten years because. From the point of, um, doing the planning and sitting before an application is ever submitted. Uh, it, it makes sense that it would take that long to the point of getting permitted.
Thank you.
And, and so you're saying that we have capacity to twenty twenty seven? I mean, we, we saw one report that says twenty thirty one and you were saying that. Um, that, that report doesn't take certain capacity issues into consideration. And that you were mostly looking at more around twenty twenty seven.
In our, in our fiscal note, we indicated that we could see some decrease in capacity by that time, by twenty twenty seven.
So that's decreasing. Do you know what percentage of decrease in capacity?
I don't have that information.
Okay. Representative Murray.
Thank you. While we're talking about decreases here, I, I was referring back to the twenty twenty one, twenty two biennial solid waste report that your department, uh, issued. And I was looking at the roughly one and a half million tons of waste that was noted as being disposed of between NSW and CND. Um, in the year twenty eighteen and we are at a seven percent reduction, uh, as compared to, um. Twenty eighteen, in twenty twenty two, one point three, maybe one point four million tons. Um, were, uh, disposed of in the year twenty twenty two. So we are trending in the right direction of disposing of less, uh, albeit slowly, but it seems like there are incremental decreases in year-over-year changes from twenty. Twenty all the way to twenty twenty two with some fluctuation. So I didn't know if you expect those trends to continue or not, and if you could speak to that.
We do hope and expect those trends to continue and, uh, with. Implementation of. Increased recycling, increased composting, all of the things that our solid waste plan, which is a ten-year plan. Uh, proposes to have implemented, we would see the amount being landfilled decrease further.
Representative Patenza.
I have a couple of questions, if, okay, so, um. The report says twenty thirty four though, not twenty thirty one, I just wanted to correct that, so.
Which report?
The one that you were just saying that it, yeah, um. So in any case, I wanted to understand about capacity and it's true that. With all of the permit applications, a hundred percent New Hampshire comes first, correct? We come first, we have to be able to take care of our waste before anyone else, correct?
I don't really understand your question.
In the permit application that someone's putting in for, for a landfill, so the current landfills. Preference a hundred percent is New Hampshire's trash.
Preference in the permit application? I'm sorry, I'm not following. I'm not trying to be obtuse.
Are you trying to say that when a landfill operator accepts? Um, solid waste, that they have a hundred percent preference to that coming from? New Hampshire and then what comes from out of state?
Correct, in the planning of the permit.
Do our, do our waste operators? Uh, have any kind of preference to where the waste is coming from when it comes to their facility? I mean, will they, they won't. They, they take New Hampshire trash before they would take out-of-state trash? No, yes?
DES does not, uh, is not able to set a limit or a percentage of. No, in-state as opposed to out-of-state trash that the landfills will accept. I'm not.
Hang on, no, no, hang on, that, then go ahead, Representative Patenza.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's like a preference or anything like that, it's, it's truly an obligation, it's in the permit, it says. That you shall guarantee capacity for New Hampshire. It's a New Hampshire.
To take New Hampshire waste, yes. Yes.
Okay. Representative Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the current rules, uh, expire in July, is that right? The current, um, about landfills, they're working on new rules that will take place in. So the current permit, um, application that's, will that, will the old rules apply or the new rules? Um, if, as that, as that progresses through the system?
That's a question that we've posed to DOJ and I don't have the answer today.
Okay. Representative Patenza.
So in the current, um, application that, um, DES has. They state in there, that application came in, can you give me exactly when that application came?
I believe October.
Okay, so October, they're basically saying, uh, that they can take trash in twenty twenty seven. So how is that six to ten years?
I'm not prepared today and it wouldn't be appropriate for me to speak about any permit application that we are currently reviewing.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, I want to thank you for, uh, your testimony today.
Thank you, and we'll see you tomorrow.
All right. Any other, uh, persons who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, I'd like the blue sheet, please. And, uh, from our online portal, we have three hundred thirty seven people signed in support of this bill and seven in opposition. And on our blue sheet. Thank you, Representative Nab. We have four in favor. And with that, I'm going to close out the hearing for, uh, HB sixteen twenty.